We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll begin with a roll call of the Holdover Board Directors, but before roll call, I'll just make a brief live streaming announcement, particularly for those in the audience. The meetings of the Mechanicsburg Area School District Board of Directors are being recorded and livestreamed for the purpose of transparency and increased public access. The livestream along with the recordings from previously held meetings can be found on the School Board's YouTube channel. And roll call of the Holdover Board Directors are those that were not up for election or reelection, and they're seated at the board table here this evening. So we'll begin with Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Dr. Rhodes.
Present.
Mr. Sankar.
Here.
And Mr. Rupp. With all in attendance, the next step in the process will be to elect a temporary president. That individual will not be a candidate for president, and the vote that proceeds or follows, I shouldn't say proceeds, follows the election of the temporary president. So with that, I will ask and open the floor for nominations for temporary presidents. I'd like to nominate Mr. Bradley.
Second.
A second.
Hearing nomination for Mr. Bradley in a second, I'll ask the Holdover Board Directors if there are any other nominations for temporary president.
Make a motion to close nominations.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second to close the nominations, we will bring the candidate, for candidate for temporary president, Mr. Bradley, to the floor for a vote. You will blink over the.
At this point, I would ask the newly elected members of Mechanicsburg School Board to As a group, I'd ask you to please repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Tracy Morgan.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and Constitution of this Commonwealth.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Congratulations, welcome. All right, then we'll have a roll call of all of our board directors, including the newly seated, those having just taken the oath of office. And I will begin with Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Frengel.
Here.
Mrs. Huff.
Here.
Mr. Kickline.
Here.
Dr. Lebo.
Here.
Ms. Morgan.
Here.
Dr. Rhodes.
Present.
Mr. Rupp.
Here.
And Mr. Sankar.
Here.
At this time, I will now open the floor for nominations for board president. I'd like to nominate Mr. John Rupp. Any other nominations?
Make a motion to close nominations.
At this time, hearing none, the nominations will now be, no other candidates, the nomination will be closed. All those in favor of Mr. Rupp as board president indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed indicate so by saying no. Mr. Rupp, welcome back.
This time, I'd like to open the nominations for the position of vice president.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Brian Sankar.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations for the position of vice president?
I'll make a motion to close that nomination.
I'd like to make a motion to close the nomination.
I'll second that.
Mr. Longwell.
Second.
Second.
All those for Mr. Sankar as vice president, we'll record your vote as saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed indicate by saying no.
We'll move on to item 7.01. I make a motion to affirm the PSBA principles for governance and leadership. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Longwell.
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item eight, meeting schedule. I make a motion to approve the meeting schedule for regular board meetings, work sessions, and Finance and Facilities Committee meetings, which are detailed in the attachment. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Longwell.
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Move on to item nine. Mr. Bradley.
It's my position now, well, because it's too difficult to do the other. Okay. Adjourn. I adjourned the, asked, the adjournment of the board reorganization.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, reorganization meeting is adjourned. I'd like to call to order the December 12, 2023 regular board meeting. I'd like to announce that the meetings of the Mechanicsburg Area School District Board of Directors are being recorded and livestreamed for the purpose of transparency and increased public access. The livestream along with the recordings from previously held meetings can be found at the School Board's YouTube channel. This time, the board would like to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will have a brief moment of silent meditation. Moving on to item 1.05, roll call, Mr. Longwell.
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Frengel.
Here.
Mrs. Huff.
Here.
Mr. Kickline.
Here.
Dr. Lebo.
Here.
Ms. Morgan. President Beazum. And Dr. Rhodes.
Present.
Mr. Rupp.
Here.
And Mr. Sankar.
Here.
Here.
Item 1.06, endorsement of agenda. Are there any additions, changes to the agenda, Mr. Longwell?
There are no changes or additions to the agenda, and it will otherwise stand as written.
Item 1.07, reading of minutes of the regular board meeting of November 14, 2023. Do any board members have any additions, corrections, or discussions on the board minutes? Seeing none, then it will be accepted as published. Moving on to item two, hearing of visitors of items that are on the meeting agenda. There will be two opportunities for public comment this evening. As a reminder, public comment is limited to residents of the school district. At this time, we have reached the first opportunity for public comment. This opportunity is reserved for comments related to items that are listed on the evening's agenda for a vote. A second opportunity for public comment will occur at the end of the meeting. The second opportunity for public comment is reserved for comments on issues not listed on the agenda and not being voted upon. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and requires community members to observe a reasonable decorum. If you'd like to address the board, please come up to the podium and share your name and district address. This is for items that are being voted on at tonight's meeting. Seeing none, we'll move on to item three, reports and presentations. Item 3.01, superintendent of schools report, Dr. Leidy.
Thank you. I have two items this evening for the board and for our public. The first is, if you have an opportunity, if you haven't already done so, right outside of this wall, on the flip side, is our newly inducted law of legacy. And the law of legacy is intended to show an appreciation for those individuals who have spent a minimum of 20 years serving the children of this community as members of the staff here in Mechanicsburg Area School District. And it is inclusive of all staff, all job classifications in the district. And it's based on the best records that we have at this point. We feel pretty confident that we're back to individuals that had started in the district in 1982 and served at least 20 years, but we know that we're missing some. And so, as the plaque reads out there, if you're aware of an individual that has served the children of this community for at least 20 years, please let us know that. We have the opportunity to add additional names. And as we do each year, in recognizing years of service with our staff, we will continue to add the names of the individuals moving forward. I think it's a great way to show an appreciation, again, for the individuals who dedicate their life, and specifically, 20 years of their life and more, to the children in this community. So if you haven't seen it, look at it. Special thank you to Mr. Andy Bits. You might not know this, but this guy, I'll tell you what, he has a background in a variety of areas, and artistic design is one of them. And this design out there is in large part because of him. So I was, I tried to paint the wall, but the custodians wouldn't help. Not the extent of what I can offer with that. The other item on my report this evening is one that I always love, is recognition of our student athletes. And this evening, we have Mr. Panik here to share with us PIAA state qualifiers from the school district. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Panik.
Right. Thanks for having us again tonight. As Dr. Leidy said, a few years ago, we started to recognize our athletes that qualified through, there's a series of ways to qualify for the state tournament, but once they qualified at the tournament and competed at the PIAA level, we brought them in to recognize them. So we have two of our four groups represented tonight. You're probably not shocked, a lot of our kids are doing a lot of activities, and we have basketball games tonight, swim practice, so there's a lot going on at this time of year. But keep moving forward, we are going to recognize two of the four groups. But I am going to read a blurb about the other two that weren't able to make it. So first off, girls soccer. They finished as the Keystone Division champs this year with a record of 17-2-1 in the regular season. After qualifying for district play, they went on to beat Dallas Town in Cumberland Valley to advance to the district semifinals. In the district semifinals, they faced a Central Dolphin team who, at that point, was ranked number one in the nation, did not give up a goal up to the time they played us. We did succumb to them and lose 2-1 in overtime. We finished third in the district and ended up playing a team out of Philadelphia named Pen Ridge, and who ended up beating us, and they actually were the eventual state champion. Golf, Zach Rangan, who is not here, he qualified for the state tournament with really an unbelievable regular season. He medaled in five of his seven matches. He was the second lowest average across any mid-pen golfer. So think of all the mid-pen schools, Zach was second throughout the whole season with the lowest average. He actually did finish second in the mid-pen tournament, which was a two-day event, which allowed him to qualify for the district golf tournament. At the district golf tournament, he finished 10th, which if you finish in the top 10, you move on to the state tournament where he competed at state college at the state level. Zach's junior will be returning next year. All right, so now for the athletes that we have here. Girls tennis, Taryn Zerby and Rhyma Sahar are here. They helped guide our girls tennis team to their best record in 15 years. The girls tennis team finished the season with 12 wins and four losses, and won the mid-pen Keystone Division title. Taryn and Rhyma played as a doubles tandem and finished the regular season with an unblemished record of 11 wins and zero losses. In the postseason, Taryn and Rhyma teamed up to win the silver medal, second place out of 16 teams at the mid-pen AAA tennis tournament. Then Taryn and Rhyma won the silver medal at the District 3-3A girls doubles tennis tournament to qualify for the state tournament. Their second-place finish at the District 3 tournament qualified them to play Shady Side Academy at Pittsburgh, out of Pittsburgh, where they did lose to them that year. But it was a great season for both players, and they will both be back next year. Congratulations. Lastly, we have the boys soccer team here. They finished the regular season as the 11th seed, and I'll explain why that's of importance. They faced two teams that they played in the regular season in the playoffs, they lost to earlier in the year. They started off with Dallas Town in the first round, and they beat them 4-1 in the first round to advance to the district quarterfinals, where they played Northeastern, who they also lost to previous in the year, and beat them in double overtime in what I would call dramatic fashion, on a goal from about 40 yards out to advance to the district semifinals, where they did lose to Cumberland Valley, but they ended up finishing third in the district. And like the girls, they played a team out of Philadelphia that they lost to in the states that ended up winning the state championship at the end of the tournament. So Coach Nauti wanted to introduce the boys.
Yes, we were that good, we only needed four players. Wamwano, Joel Winner, Zach Mudawakil, and Dad Wiggins, luckily they came labeled, so I remember them. All seniors, it's a great bunch of guys. And like you say, I think what was remarkable about this group was we started off slow, and our overall record was 10-10-1, which is pure 500, and yet we were, you know, going at it right against the end of the state competition. So they really pulled it together and were a great group of characters. That was a great problem.
With this, we've grown accustomed with certain sports getting to this point. This is some new faces as far as sports programs, so very proud of everybody that competed at that level. So congratulations, guys. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Please.
I got to reflect back just a little bit. When we, when we first started doing this, if you recall, we recognized the athletes who were winning district championships and doing well at that level. And we started seeing more and more, and so we said, well, why don't we up the ante a little bit, and we might get a couple groups a year that are making it to the PIAA level of state play. And to have four groups recognized in just one of these sessions is a testament to Mr. Panik's leadership, coaching that's happening in the district, and most importantly, the dedication and effort that our student athletes are putting forward. It's quite impressive, and it's really fun to be able to recognize their accomplishments. So thank you for your leadership.
Guys.
Have a good evening.
Appreciate it.
I'll bet you have other things that you need.
Basketball going.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Leidy. Any questions for Dr. Leidy on his superintendent's report? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 3.02, Cumberland Perry Area Career and Technical Center report, Mr. Sankar.
Thank you. The CTC met yesterday morning. It holds its reorganization meeting and business meeting in the morning, just in December. I was elected JOC chair, and so it's not like getting to states, trust me, that was, that was cool. But yeah, it's, so there's been, Mr. Brunin circulated a list of the chairs for a couple years ago, and it was notable that Mechanicsburg could not ever had anybody on as chair, though plenty have served in many capacities with CTC over the years. So after 56 years, cross that one little streak off, I guess. So that's good. I do want to thank Mrs. Maris, who appointed me to the board for JOC back in 2017, and for continuing to, you know, support me as I continue to be the contact for that, I guess. So thank you for that. We also elected Ryan Hoff, who's the representative from Greenwood, as the vice president. And so, and we recognized a couple of outgoing folks. We had about, I had been telling you, I think we were about 50% turnover on the board, so that was kind of interesting to stop and explain a lot of acronyms during the meeting. So that's a little trial by fire for a group that probably had had their reorg meeting just the week before. So cleanup continues with the fuel oil leak, including hiring a consultant after a bidding process, a remediation consultant called Aqua Terra. From this point forward, I know I gave an update at the last meeting about the fuel oil leak, but we discussed that we're likely providing any future updates on insurance and legal matters through executive sessions to the boards from that perspective. So Gareth's back there to make sure I said that, I guess, I don't know, but thank you. Good. But one other public item out of the meeting was that the fuel oil leak happened during the time that we had scheduled eighth-grade tours of the building for two days. So about 3,000 students from the 13 sending districts missed their opportunity to go because we had closed for those two days. So they rescheduled that for March, which is good, make sure that they all get a chance to see the operation. So we heard from one of the administrators that applications for next year are already at 700 students, which that's kind of the, I don't know, there's multiple deadlines, this was like the first deadline, and the acceptance rate is like something in the 300 to 400 range. So already, you know, that waitlist is there and will likely grow over time, which is the reason for the facility expansion plan that we're going through right now. So the other business items, we heard, we heard from auditors at a committee call the week before, and they accepted the audit at the meeting, and we'd already approved the budget at the last meeting as well, which will come forward here to us over the next couple of meetings. So our next meeting is January 22.
Any questions for Mr. Sankar?
I just appreciate the humble brag that you had in there. It was nice, it was good.
I was.
That was okay, it's a humble brag.
Just a report.
He said it, I didn't say it.
Further questions for Mr. Sankar? Thank you for the report, Mr. Sankar. Moving on to item 3.03, the Capital Area Intermediate Unit, Mr. Bradley.
I was not elected.
You.
As a board chair. The IU met, board met on November 16. We also experienced a heavy turnover. Seven board members, seven board members were leaving, including the president and the vice president. So there'll be a new president and vice president for the IU board. And it was a little interesting that it turned into be a, a little bit of a tear-jerker fest, that the president leaving had done a lot of work with Dr. Seau, and very heavily involved with her, and so there was a very strong bond. And they like to think the board is a little closer, because they get really involved in a lot of the different activities. So it was interesting. It'll be, they have appointed a new president, and we'll do that, the other board positions on Thursday. We'll meet again this Thursday, so we'll do that again. They did cover some other items besides the seven people that were leaving. There was an audit report findings released, and it came clean, a clean opinion, no findings, which was a great news for the board and for the IU. They talked about neurodiversity and the thoughts behind neurodiversity. They're going to talk a little bit more in the next couple of months about neurodiversity and what it is and how it really works as far as students and how the students use that. There was also talked about transportation, there's still the usual things with transportation dealing with, getting enough drivers, bus drivers, van drivers, working on getting winter-ready. The technology side, they talked a little bit about AI and starting to talk a little bit about AI and what the good sides and the bad sides of AI is and how to deal with that going forward. The HR department has been transitioning a lot of new software. They're using something called Transition to Paycom is the application that they're using. They also talked a little bit about Agenda Manager and using Agenda Manager. And that's about it. Yes. And as I said, we will be meeting again on Thursday, the 14th, for our next board meeting.
I hate to put you on the line as the physician, but can you give me the definition of neurodiversity in the context of the discussion? Seriously, I don't.
Sure. Neurodiversity is just along the lines of the different way people think. Taking someone that has maybe a gifted capability and the way that their mind works, as opposed to someone who may have a disability or may have something that prevents them from being fully engaged in other things. But it's really also taking a look at the people that have those different ways of thinking through things and working through things, and understanding that, kind of along the lines, you don't paint everything with the same brush. You have to recognize these different people and the different ways that they process things, and the different ways that they worked on things, the different ways that they grasp the concepts, and leverage that into taking advantage of that, taking advantage of the way they think, and to try and accelerate their learning as a, as a way of improving their overall experiences. So it's looking at, even though they may have some other things that restrict them in their learning journey, there are other things that are happening through their brain and the way that their brain operate that you can take advantage of and actually expand on that to improve the journey process for them as much.
An answer.
It's a great answer.
Yeah.
I was going to say, where was that when the teacher was pulling me out of class? You know, Josh, special reading group.
I just put the AI in here, and it just picked up. I read what AI told me to read.
Well, I will say this to you, that I think a lot of this is coming out of the research that's happening around autism and the FMRI's that are doing the functional MRIs that they've been doing with brain scans. It's actually fascinating from a science perspective and an education perspective. So I can't wait to see what, how this continues to grow. But neurodiversity, we got to call it something that gets your, gets your attention to it.
So I got to sort of kind of write.
It seems like it represents a very complex way of teaching for the future of education.
Yeah, we've been talking about differentiation for a very long time, but this, this has the ability, I think, to be a little more focused on particular skills that students need.
Right.
Further questions or comments to Mr. Bradley?
Especially.
Mr. Bradley, thank you for the report. Item 3.04, PSBA legislative report. I have no report this month. If you have any questions or anybody else has any legislative issues that they've seen that we should discuss, bring them up now. Seeing none, we'll move on to item 3.05, Finance and Facilities Committee report, Mr. Sankar.
No report from the committee. I've been at the last meeting.
Move on to item 3.06, Board President Report. I'd like to announce that an executive session was held on December 12, 2023, at 6:40 p.m. to discuss student and personnel matters. And I'd also like to welcome our newly elected and re-elected board directors. And what I'd like to do just real quick, we'll start with Lane, it's the season one. If you'd just like to introduce yourself, that the public and other board members know your name and who you are. A little, if you want to say a little something, that's fine, if not, that's perfectly fine.
Lane Lebo, I served two terms, and this is now starting my third term. Happy to be serving again.
Jason Kickline, I've been a resident of Upper Round for 25 years.
I have two young children in the district, and I just wanted to get involved in this wonderful school board because of the power of community that is in Mechanicsburg.
I'm Peter Frengel, and very much the same, I'm a great believer in this, this school district, this community, and I want to see continued excellence, so that's why I'm a member of the school.
Mrs. Huff.
Hi, I'm Julie Huff. I served in the district previously as assistant superintendent and a teacher and instructional coach for over 24 years, and retired in 2020. And I just couldn't stand being away, because I think that children are our future, as we say, and I believe that that's, this board has an obligation to make sure we do the best we can for our students. I also have two grandchildren in the district and three children that went through the system, so glad to be back.
And lastly, Ms. Morgan.
I'm Tracy Morgan. I've served for 22 years, so I guess I have four more years.
I've served for 22 years, so I guess I have four more years. I'm honored to be back again, so I've had two kids start kindergarten and graduate through the district, so I feel like I'm probably representing the senior citizens of the community now. But I'm thrilled to be here and hope to be live with you all soon, so. And I'd like to congratulate and welcome the new board members tonight, too. So, Julie, it'll be great to have you on the team again, so I look forward to it.
Very good. While we have you, Ms. Morgan, we'll move on to item six, New Business Budget and Finance. Item 6.01, Treasures Report.
I'd like to ask the board to approve the treasures report as per the attachments which include the following. Number one is the treasures report for November 2023, the board budget report for November 2023. Number three is the general fund invoices paycheck number 67291 through 67459 in the amount of $722,481.95. Number four is the electronic payments in the amount of $6,891,959.28. Number five is the general fund invoices payable checks number 67460 through 67477 in the amount of $507,815.48. Number six is the capital reserve fund invoices paycheck number 1881 through 1883 in the amount of $17,976.27. Number seven is the series of 2023 construction fund invoices paid number, check number 136 through 146 in the amount of $22,208,117.34. And lastly is the investment portfolio.
We have a second.
Second.
Further discussion on the treasure report. Mr. Longwell.
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item 6.02, Mr. Bradley.
I'd ask the board to approve the tax policies report as presented in the attachment.
The second.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Longwell.
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item seven, New Business Curriculum. Item 7.01, did you take it, Dr. Rhodes?
I asked the board to approve the student service contracts as presented in the attachment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Further conversation?
Discussion.
Mr. Longwell.
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item nine, New Business Personnel. Item 9.01, Ms. Morgan.
I ask the board to approve the attachment as shown.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion on the personnel report? Mr. Longwell.
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item 9.02, Ms. Morgan.
Can somebody read that for me? It's not showing up on my iPad, sorry.
Mr. Bradley.
I'd ask the board to authorize the administration and district solicitor to approve an individual settlement agreement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Longwell.
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item 10, New Business Policy. Item 10.01, Mr. Bradley.
I'd ask the board to adopt the agreement and waiver of hearing before the Board of Directors between parent, student, and the board, and the terms and conditions set forth therein direct the superintendent to place said agreement in students' education records, authorize the superintendent to act on behalf of the board in implementing the agreement, and order the expulsion of the following student. Student D of 2023-2024 school year, beginning November 22nd, 2023, for one calendar year.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
I know I sound like a broken record every time I say this when we have to do something that's difficult like this, but I'm always impressed with how the administration handles these situations, and it's always the student that we have in mind and the education of the student, and making that person a better person and putting them somewhere where they're, where they're going to thrive and be a better person. So, I'm proud of the school district, although none of us like to do this, none of us do. I'm proud of this district and how it handles these situations, I very much am. I fully agree with what you said.
Further comments or discussion? Mr. Longwell.
Unless I hear a negative response, I'll record the roll call as a unanimous vote.
Item 12, Hearing of Visitors. We have reached the second opportunity for public comment. This opportunity is reserved for comments on issues not listed on the agenda and not being voted upon this evening. As a reminder, public comment is limited to residents of the school district. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and requires community members to observe a reasonable decorum. If you'd like to address the board, please come up to the podium and share your name and district address. This is public comment for any items that were not on the agenda tonight. Seeing none, I'd like to thank everybody for attending. It was a short meeting, as we always try to do that when we have to board members, so at this time, I'll, Ms. Morgan, item 13.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Meeting is.